All right, great. I'm going to convene the regular board meeting of Tuesday, August 30th. Can we get a roll call?
Yes, trustee Boyd.
Here.
Trustee Davidson.
Here.
Trustee Dos. Vice President Duran.
Here.
President Hinckley.
Here.
Superintendent Wells.
Here.
Great, thank you. And we now open for public comment on closed session items. I don't see anybody, and we are already at 5:05. So I will close public comment for closed session items, and we will now adjourn to closed session. We'll come back to this room when we're done with closed session, but everybody, I hope remembers how to get where we're supposed to go next. So I'll see you there. I know we're at 7:20. I'm just waiting for Superintendent Wells. All right, we're all here. I'm calling to order the regular board meeting of Tuesday, August 30th. Can we get a roll call, please?
Student trustee Garcia Bustamante.
Here.
Student trustee Dana.
Here.
Trustee Boyd.
Here.
Trustee Davidson.
Here.
Trustee Dos.
President.
Vice President Duran.
Here.
President Hinckley.
Here.
Superintendent Wells.
Here.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. For anyone who'd like to join, I'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we have our mission and vision statement and meeting norms read, please?
Yes. The mission of Albany Unified School District is to provide excellent public education that empowers all to achieve their fullest potential as productive citizens. AUSD is committed to creating comprehensive learning opportunities in a safe, supportive, and collaborative environment, addressing the individual needs of each student.
Meeting norms. Maintain a focus on what is best for our students. Ensure a safe environment for all views to be expressed, treating each other, staff, and the public respectfully. Endeavor to find common solutions to issues through collaboration without sacrificing one's belief in what is best for students. Make a commitment to effective deliberation, each one listening with an open mind, while others are allowed to express their own points of view, even if one disagrees.
Great, thank you. There was no action taken in closed session. Appreciate everyone's patience waiting for us to come back. Can I get a motion to approve our agenda for tonight?
I move that we approve tonight's agenda.
I second that.
Student trustee Garcia Bustamante.
Yes.
Student trustee Dana.
Yes.
Trustee Boyd.
Yes.
Trustee Davidson.
Yes.
Trustee Dos.
Yes.
Vice President Duran.
Yes.
President Hinckley.
Yes.
Thanks.
Great, the agenda's approved unanimously, and we now move to our recognition for tonight, which is Resolution 2022-2304. Excuse me, Recognizing Latino Latinx Heritage Month for September 15th to October 15th. I'll turn this over to Vice President Duran.
Thank you, President Hinckley. Ms. Shin, would you be so willing to go back to the other component, the background information? And I didn't have an opportunity to reach out to our student trustees, but would you be so kind as to read this section, please? And then the next section will go in order. And I just want to mention that these recognitions are not just sort of window dressing for the board and for the community. It really is kind of health, heartfelt, and an opportunity for all of us to learn about a variety of different issues, not only in our school district but for the nation. And so that's why we bring these recognitions to you. So this evening, we do start off with the Latino Latinx Heritage Month. So student trustees, if you could read this section, I'd really appreciate it.
Yeah. For far too long, the history and achievements of people of color in the United States have been overlooked in school textbooks, the media, and society as a whole. While the federal government now provides monthly recognitions as a way to address this, it is crucial that students and faculty take this opportunity to reflect on a deeper meaning. That is, diversity is an integral part of the fabric of the United States, and these resolutions provide a way to celebrate and honor the richness of the diverse cultures of this country. It is important to respect and honor our differences that collectively make up American history.
Long before the United States was even declared a country, we were here. Our indigenous ancestors had great civilizations over two millennia ago. We never crossed the border. The border crossed us. Today, the Latino population of the United States is composed of people of Mexican origin, Puerto Ricans, Dominicans, and Central and South Americans. The relatively new term Latinx acknowledges the diversity of our population with all its gender and sexual identities, and is a reflection of our changing societal norms. These recognitions also serve to remind us that we still have an uphill struggle in righting the wrongs of inequality in education, and that the Albany Unified School District commits to addressing these educational inequities in our schools.
Ms. Shin, if we could now go to the, okay, here we are, the resolution. President Hinckley, would you begin, and then we'll kind of go in the regular order?
Sure. Whereas the Albany Unified School District Board of Education, the board recognizes the integral role and influence of Latino Latinx people to the history, culture, language, and achievements of the United States, and
whereas the dates of September 15th through September 18th are significant because they mark the anniversary of independence of multiple Latin American and Central American countries, as well as Mexico from Spain, and trustee Boyd.
Whereas the origins of the diverse Latino Latinx population is a mixture of our indigenous ancestors of the Americas, with various combinations of Europeans, Africans, and Asians, and
whereas the term Latinx is most often used by the younger generation in the community because it is a gender-neutral term and seeks to acknowledge the gender and sexual inclusion of all, and
whereas Latino Latinx students make up 17% of the AUSD student population and 55% of California's public school student population, and is the largest ethnic group in the United States, and
trustee Dana.
There we go. Sorry, my microphone wasn't there for a second. Whereas Latino Latinx people have a deep commitment to family and community, an enduring work ethic, and a distinct Cisupuete attitude.
I can read the last part, if you'd like.
Please.
Okay. Therefore, be it resolved that the board affirms September 15th to October 15th, 2022, is the Latino Latinx Heritage Month, and the superintendent will ensure that staff nurtures and mentors Latino Latinx students in an environment that honors their diverse cultures and that welcomes their participation in every space. District schools and teachers will commemorate this occasion with appropriate instructional materials and activities.
That's it, President Hinckley. You will continue, please.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for bringing this forward. And is there a motion to pass, adopt this resolution? Yeah, trustee Dana.
I just wanted to quickly make a note that the term Latina was also in last year's resolution as well. And I also think that it's important to recognize that that's a term that we can also use to address this group of people. So yeah, that's all. I wholeheartedly support this, and I hope that it's integrated into our daily life within this month and every month. So, thanks.
So trustee Dana, was that a motion to approve this resolution?
Sure. I move that we approve Resolution Number 22, 2022-23-04, Recognizing Latino Latinx Heritage Month, September 15th through October 15th.
And I will second that motion.
Trustee Garcia Bustamante.
Yes.
Trustee Dana.
Yes.
Trustee Davidson.
Yes.
Trustee Dos. Vice President Duran.
See.
President Hinckley.
Yes.
Trustee Boyd.
Yes.
Great, thank you. The resolution passes unanimously. Thank you again to Vice President Duran for bringing this and so many resolutions forward. I know that there are a couple of parents that are working to revitalize Familias Latinas, to plan some activities starting September 15th. So maybe that's something the district could remind families about, is how to get in touch with that and our other parent engagement groups, just so they can get more involved and also engage in that planning that's beginning to happen for how to commemorate this in the coming month. Yeah, trustee Dos.
I just wanted to do a special thank you to the student trustees that, you know, worked on this along with Vice President Duran. I don't know if the community understands or knows, but these resolutions are not easy. It takes like a lot of work and collaboration, and they're tricky, and you know, they need to be, you know, very precise, and there's a lot of, you know, time that goes into it. So, thank you. I really appreciate all your work on this.
Great, thank you. So we now move to our consent calendar, which has one item that was left on by mistake. You may have noticed it didn't include any supporting materials, Item 7H, the Student Teaching Agreement with XX. So we need to, well, board members, I'll first open up space if there are any questions or items that you'd like to remove from the consent calendar, but when it's time for a motion, we need it to specify that Item 7H is not included. So are there any questions? Or a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the consent calendar and remove Item 7H.
I'll second that.
Hey, trustee Garcia Bustamante.
Yes.
Trustee Dana.
Yes.
Trustee Dos.
Yes.
Vice President Duran.
Yes.
President Hinckley.
Yes.
Trustee Boyd.
Yes.
Trustee Davidson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. The consent calendar is passed with the removal of Item 7H unanimously, and we move to board and superintendent reports, starting with you, Dr. Falls.
Madam Chair, I'm pleased to announce that I'm going to table my report into our next regularly scheduled board meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just wanted to, I know our committees haven't started meeting much yet, so we don't have a lot to say about that, but we did have a board workshop last week where we began to define our goals and objectives for the coming school year. Thank you to those members of the public that attended. And you will see the draft outcome of that at our September 13th meeting, so that's another opportunity. That will be a regular board meeting, another opportunity for the public to provide feedback on how the district focuses its energies over the coming year, and then those will be finalized sometime at the end of September, early October. And that's my whole report. Vice President Duran.
I also just have one item, and that's really a repeat that I wanted to share with the board and the community, just sort of a focus again on safety at our schools and securing our schools. And so I have had the opportunity since the last meeting to meet both with Dr. Wells and talk with the principal at AHS. And so there's certainly some action that's going to be taken immediately. And then the superintendent, of course, is having the Safety Task Force that will be meeting the week of September 12th. So those are all important things, and I look forward to lots of focus on keeping not only our students safe, but staff as well. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Dos.
Thank you. My report is super short. I was walking home last week, and when I passed by Cornell, because I'm able to walk home, because I do actually live in Albany. When I passed by Cornell, there were some students outside, and they were playing. And so I stopped and just, you know, just interacted, and and I realized that it would be great if we were able to enhance our sports program within the elementary school. Because then I remembered that there was another time, actually, during our in-person board meeting that we had, I ended up, I got a chance to play basketball with another student, right? And so I realized that when I was in elementary school, we had sports teams within the elementary school. And I think that it really like enhances, you know, everything. There are studies that show that, you know, sports, you know, enhances, you know, the classroom, you know, and builds a lot of other, you know, great things, you know, that students need in order to develop and become, you know, productive, you know, citizens. So I really would love to see enhancement in the sports program at the elementary school level. So, you know, I just noticed that and thought that I would, you know, mention that. One other thing I wanted to mention is, you know, I got an opportunity to pass by the Marin site at the high school. And there were a few safety concerns there. I believe they're being addressed. And then there were some additional safety concerns at the after-school program at Ocean View, but I believe those are being addressed as well. But I just wanted to say during the board report, so it's on the record, so that the community knows that we do know about this. We have noticed it. And I believe they are currently being addressed. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Trustee Boyd.
Thank you. I'll just quickly say that I got the chance to meet with the leaders at both of my school sites today. Actually, it was a busy AUSD-filled day for me, and had wonderful discussions with both of them. Principal Cool at Marin was able to give me a little update on how construction is going, which is that it's going wonderfully wonderful, and I am among many who will be super excited to be able to be on that campus and sort of see it in all of its glory once that's complete. And she was also able to let me know that the interviews and the whole process for looking for the new assistant principal there are going great, and that they were fortunate enough to have wonderful candidates for that position. So there was lots of great news and good energy and teachers and staff members who got the opportunity to get a little bit of refreshing time over the summer and just great energy and people excited to be back on campus and then had the chance to, excuse me, get to talk to Coordinator Jackie De La Cruz Kitagawa at ACC. And wow, just so much energy, so much enthusiasm, great vibes, so much, so many great ideas from her past experience working with after-school, before-school programs as well as preschools, and I just really love her enthusiasm and feel that she is going to be just such a great breath of fresh air in that space and a great support for our teachers. And she also, which I want to do as well, was extremely complimentary and wanted to recognize all of the work that our teachers and staff members have been doing at that site, even when they did not have someone in that leadership role and how difficult that was, and what a great deal of effort and commitment really went into keeping that facility going strong. And so want to honor and appreciate the people who've been there, keeping the doors open and keeping our students safe and taught and cared for, and also really appreciate our new coordinator in that space and looking forward to really great things at that school site. That's it.
Trustee Davidson.
That was so positive. I'm so excited to follow that. So I had the pleasure of tending the Cornell first community time out on the new play yard, and it was just so, so wonderful, and they sang this beautiful song about returning to the mountain, and the students led the coyote chant, and it was just such a fun thing to experience, and I realized there was so much time. We didn't have that feeling, and it's really nice to have that with our kids back. Tomorrow morning is coffee with Principal Ryan Mueller at Cornell, so please hang out after drop-off and join her. I'm sorry, student trustees, if you were going to announce that. Announce it again. And I just wanted to share that Principal Ryan Mueller asked the students some of their favorite things on the new yard, and grass was the first thing shouted out, and there were kids out there playing little mini soccer games and tumbling and with the stuffed animals that Coach Joel puts out, playing with those, and the teachers said it's so nice to look out of their classrooms at that. I just wanted to appreciate the work and the effort that went into getting that done and how much it means to those kids to have that access on their schoolyard and the triangular basketball hoops. At first I thought, how's this going to work? And my son reported that playing around the world and the different games is really, really fun and really enjoys it. So much appreciation and see you tomorrow at the coffee.
Student board members.
Yep, okay. Well, we have a lot more than some of you guys. Just a couple of announcements. So as for the Student Advocacy Committee, we're going to be hosting our first meeting of the school year on September 5th. And we're hoping to get the link posted somewhere public in terms of the students, so that non-member students can also see what our meetings are like and sit in and observe. And that's something that is sort of different from the way that we're running it right now, and we want it to operate more like a committee, so that's new. Unelli?
Yeah, and orders for free at-home government-issued COVID-19 tests, those are going to be suspended this Friday. So go ahead and order your tests before this Friday. I believe there was an email sent out earlier this week, but if you can't find it, you can go to covidtest.gov to order your COVID tests.
And then also, there will be a volleyball game against Berkeley High this Thursday, and the theme is blackout. So if you'd like to come, just come to the Albany High Gym, and be sure to wear all black. And then also, classes on Aries will be available to view starting on September 6th for those at the high school. Yeah.
Lockers are also going to be available for students this week. Just come to the Flex Office or the Bookroom with a buddy to receive your assignment.
And then for the second time tonight at Cornell, there will be a principal's coffee tomorrow at 8:30 a.m., and this is the one that was postponed. I think we referenced it last board meeting, but this is postponed from the 24th. So it's happening, and it's happening tomorrow. Thanks, trustee Davidson, for feeding us to that one.
For AMS, the sixth-grade potlucks will take place from September 12th to 15th, all from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00. Head over to the AMS website to see which day corresponds for which teacher. And then for Ocean View, the PTSA membership meeting is going to take place from 6:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. on September 8th. The meeting is going to be held in person, but where, like which room, is still being determined. A tour of the campus for parents is going to be held just September 27th from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m.
And yeah, that also was for Ocean View. And then this Thursday, September 1st at Marin, there will be an English Language Advisory Committee meeting. That's from 5:45 to 6:15. And then Marin has Back to School Night also this Thursday, and so the San Gabriel location will be from 6:30 to 7:30, and then the Portland location will be from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. And on September 12th, there's a PTA meeting for Marin, 6:30 to 8:00. So a lot of dates, a lot of events, a lot of exciting things. We hope to see what some of them were looking to get more community involvement. So yeah, show up, show out. That's all for our report tonight. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. We now move to, sorry, looking for my agenda. Trustee Davidson, did you want to add a comment to our reports?
Yeah, I think this week is Back to School Night, isn't it, for all elementary schools on the same night for the all?
Um, let's see. I mean, we only saw the one for, well, we only saw in the announcements, the one for Marin, but you might have more relevant information than us, because those aren't our sites.
And I'll be putting out this Friday the schedule of all of the back-to-school nights for the following week, so.
Okay.
And we also have it on the website.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Sorry about that.
It's a lot. It's a busy time of year. So, no worries. And there's no school on Monday. Don't forget, it's Labor Day. All right, we are now moving to persons to address the board on matters not on the agenda. So just as a reminder, the board is not able to comment on matters that are raised during this public comment period. Just because we don't say anything doesn't mean we're not listening. But just a reminder that we're not allowed to respond to discussion of items that are not already on our agenda. So I'm stalling until my comment timer comes up. There we go. Thank you, Julie. So we'll start with Hufaker Family. You might be muted.
Hi, sorry. Yeah, my name is Shannon Hufaker, and I just want to take a minute to talk about my concerns about a board meeting that was held on August 23rd. This meeting was unannounced, and it was closed to the public, and I don't believe that this meeting complies with the requirements around public meetings for school boards. I want to express my disappointment that this meeting happened at all. It's my understanding that this meeting was prompted by a person or people who were determined to spread untrue and harmful rumors about one of our Board of Trustees, claiming that trustee Dos claiming that Trustee Dos did not live in Albany. And I hope the person who started this rumor is listening and is ashamed about their role in this meeting and spreading falsehoods about a member of our community. I'm also really disappointed that the board and superintendent entertained this blatant lie and wasted time and money like the lawyer's fees, having an unnecessary meeting to investigate this stupid rumor. The best-case scenario here is that Trustee Dos is being targeted because of his role in advocating for our opening our schools throughout the pandemic, worst-case scenario. This is an allegation that's rooted in racism and white supremacy. And I just want to extend my personal, you know, apologies to Trustee Dos for what he went through. And just to say that he's an incredibly important member of this community. And I am really sorry and disappointed and upset that he was targeted in this way. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremiah.
Oh, here I go. Excuse me, board. Regarding the last, the last public comment, I agree for sure. So just to let everybody know, I went to Brian Dos's daughter's lemonade stand yesterday to his house where he lives. I met his wife and his kids and his stepmom and his mom. I was there for a couple hours. I was even trying to help him fix his garage door. So he does live there. Anyway, long story short. You know, thank you, School District and School Board for supporting me the past two years. I really appreciate it. And so I just want to make a little comment on, I get to go to a school assembly in Granite Bay where I get to observe an assembly. And I'm not sure if the school district's aware or what's going on regarding, you know, fentanyl and how many kids and teenagers in high schools' lives. This epidemic has been killing our youth and it's really sad. You know, I'm Narcan kit-trained myself and I really wish that the school board would push for every single school teacher and school staff to be Narcan-trained, CPR-trained, AED-trained, have an AED device in every classroom, a Narcan kit in every classroom. Because you never know what's going to happen. There's kids doing drugs in the bathrooms. We all know that. And so tonight, there's a few other public commenters that are leading a group. It's a DEA program, Drug Enforcement Agency, federal, federal-funded. It's called One Pill Can Kill. And it's about counterfeit pills. And so we're just trying to raise awareness. And so thank you for listening to my public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sebastian.
Hi, I am just calling in to say that I am disappointed in the board that they actually convened a meeting about Trustee Dos and, you know, paid to entertain this ridiculous rumor that he does. He and his family don't live in Albany. Now, I've not been a member of the community for too long. We moved here from Singapore in 2019, a few months, months before the pandemic hit. And even then, I mean, when the pandemic hit, it was a scary time for my family. We were away from our extended family. And I would just like to say the Dos's were the first, among the first in this community to reach out. They, you know, I'm not sure if many of you are aware, but at risk to themselves, they threw open their backyard to families that, you know, needed to help, to children that needed, that wanted to go to Zoom school together, you know, in a safe, open airspace. And I'm, 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 I find it ridiculous that the board, you know, that the board would actually convey, convene that meeting and that they didn't know about this, that they didn't know the involvement of the Dos's in this community. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah.
Hi, thank you all, board members and school district members. And we really appreciate everything you do for our community. And I just especially want to support Trustee Dos and just thank you for your courage and for the compassion you've shown to kids. I know my child really appreciated talking with you during a very tough time. And I was just blown away that you took the time to talk with them and to hear their story and offer words of encouragement. It made a huge difference in their healing process. And I'm just grateful for all you do. You have a really big heart and we were so grateful that you're in Albany. Thanks.
Thank you. Chris.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I want to echo the Hufaker family's sentiments. We, my family lives two doors down from Trustee Dos and his family. And we just wanted to call in and express our strongest support of the Dos family. It's unfortunate because they just couldn't be a better and more upstanding family. And had just whoever reported him, just asked his neighbors. We would have said, yeah, they're, they're there or maybe they're vacationing or maybe they, you know, I don't know. I have no idea how this even could have been insinuated. I think we could do better, Albany. We just really could. You know, we're in this together and we're a small community and we take care of each other. And I just wanted to express my family's support of the Dos family and hope that we could do better next time.
Thank you. Laura.
Hi, thank you so much for, for letting me speak. I just wanted to, to echo this, the statements that were made by, by Jeremiah earlier about this crisis of, of fentanyl poisoning that is affecting our students. I reside in Placer County, but I am connected to families, families in, in your county who have lost, also lost kids to these pills. I lost my 17-year-old son to a counterfeit pill that was made of fentanyl just about 20 months ago. And our county in Placer and our school districts here are doing a tremendous job in educating young people about these dangers. I think, I, I know that there are other parents that, that will be speaking on this as well. I think it's really important, you know, that school districts band together and get this message to our kids. I feel very strongly that if my 17-year-old son Zach had had an assembly very much like the ones that we are doing, he would have made, he would have been more informed. He would not have been deceived to death by a counterfeit pill. So I just appreciate the time to, to speak with you about it. And it's, it's definitely an issue that all communities need to join together to combat. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you so much for calling and sharing your story. And I'm sure I speak for everyone about, everyone on the board, you know, that we're really sorry for your loss and, and for that pain. So thank you for sharing that with us. Next is Jeannie.
Hi, this is Jeannie Polovich. I just wanted to say thank you to the board. I was just recently at Cougar Field and the field looks fantastic. The track is down. One of the field goal posts is up and there's a few more things to do, but it looks amazing and will be available for the community soon. So thanks so much to everybody who helped get that through. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is, oops, sorry, clicked the wrong button. Next is Liz.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. I'd like to thank Jeremiah for letting us know that you guys were doing this tonight. I am also another mom who lost a young adult to counterfeit pill. And unfortunately, it was through somebody that he had trusted and thought it was one thing and it was another. And so far, fentanyl poisonings are number one cause of death in our youth from ages 15 to 35 in this country, superseding heart disease, car accidents and everything included. And we're behind the eight ball on this war, which is what it is right now with counterfeit pills. And it is very pervasive in this county and throughout Northern California. So we'd like to offer our assistance to Alameda County and surrounding counties. The program One Pill Can Kill has been doing very well in Northern California and raising awareness to kiddos that aren't aware of the dangers of what's being placed in front of them, unfortunately. So at the beginning of the assemblies, we asked the children, who's aware of fentanyl? And you get a somewhat of a small percentage of raised hands. And by the time we're done, which is usually about a half an hour to a 40-minute assembly, we asked the same question. Every kid raises their hand because right now we have to arm our children with the information to be able to use the tools to battle what's being placed in front of them. So I appreciate your time and thank you for, for giving us a moment to speak.
But before you leave, the two parents, I want to make sure, Ms. Shin, you have the information on the two parents who lost their, their kids and so that we can follow up with them with this campaign around this really troubling issue that's not only hitting America, but it's coming here and is here in Albany. And we need to be responsible responding. And this is a rich resource that I like to tap into. So let's make sure we have their information so that I can follow up with the parents.
Oh, Dr. Wells, you're in luck because I have all their, their information. I'll get it to you ASAP.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for bringing that up. And thank you again, Liz, for sharing your story. And I'm very sorry for your loss. All right, next. Sorry, I'm having Zoom. Order issues. All right, next is Chris. Yep, go ahead. You're not muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, now we can hear you. Go ahead. We can hear you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. I don't think you can hear us. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. I'm sorry. I didn't, my, my audio totally went blank on me. My name is Chris and as Laura already mentioned, I lost, we lost our precious son Zachary about a year and a half ago. And I'm sorry, hold on a minute. Something is going on with the audio. Sorry, hold on.
We, we can hear you fine.
I'm hearing other voices, but I'm not sure why, but everyone can still hear me?
Yep.
And just me? Because I hear other people talking.
We don't hear anybody else.
Okay. All right. So I'll be brief. I highly recommend Googling DEA's One Pill Can Kill campaign or you can go to the number on pill can kill placer.com or one pill can kill sac.com. The prevalence of counterfeit prescription pills has rocked our country and our country is suffering up to 200 fentanyl-involved deaths every single day or a fentanyl-related death every seven minutes. And it's a, is a crisis that is completely consuming. And as Liz already mentioned, it's the number one killer for young adults and regular adults in our country. And it is something that is wildly out of control. And unfortunately, the cartels are exploiting social media by using social media as a grocery store to sell any and all illicit products. And they're coming out as poisonous products. So please join us in our fight to bring awareness and to stop this crisis. And I apologize for the audio confusion and running wrong.
No worries. We, we can hear you fine. Yeah. And thank you for sharing your story and, and I'm sorry for your loss. All right, last is Laura.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for letting me call in. I'm also part of the parent coalition in Placer County and have also lost a young son. It'll be two years on September 21. And it has devastated our family and it's devastating all of our communities. And the One Pill Can Kill Placer is the first ray of hope that I feel like we are able to advocate and bring to our communities to spread this awareness. And I highly recommend, I would do anything to help your county as well to get this out to our youth. They need to hear the story. It is being sold on Snapchat, Instagram. These kids are being marketed deception. They have no idea. You know, a kid who needs to take, they think they need to take a pill, you know, to cram for their studies or to calm them down. And they think it's a legitimate prescription pill. These pills look exactly like the real thing. And they're pressed and they contain nothing but fentanyl. It's two grains of salt. That's it. That's the amount that can kill a person. There's no way to tell the difference. And it can be, it can be delivered to your doorstep. And these are kids that are straight A kids, sports kids, band kids, kids going to college. There is, there is no more second chances. There's no more experimentation. And they're listening. I'm going to tell you in these assemblies, they're listening, they're polite, they're coming up to us after, they're thanking us. And they have the power to spread the news. They're all connected. They can get on their social media. They can help stop this crisis. And I just, anything we can do to help you, don't want to have this happen to your family. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about the loud beat that happens. And thank you for sharing your story like the others. And I'm very sorry for your loss. And it sounds like our staff will be following up to find out more about the campaign. Yeah, Trustee Davidson.
I know we're not supposed to comment on these things, but I read an article this morning about rainbow fentanyl being distributed and DEA and DOJ are warning the Bay Area about this. So I feel that I was just going to send that article tomorrow to our superintendent. But coming up on Halloween, I feel like it's something that we definitely should take seriously and appreciate the superintendent's comments on it.
All right, we actually have one more public comment. If you don't mind resetting. Oh, no. All right, they put their hand back down. All right. Thank you, everyone, for calling in. And we now move to our one large item for tonight, which is our staff report, which is an update on the follow-up from the special education audit, which we received at the end of last year. Go ahead, Superintendent Wells.
Thank you for that. As you know, we, we, we received last year, towards the end of the year, our long-awaited special ed audit that we really use to guide the work that we are about to undertake. Because that is what a system approach does, so that we can provide the best education for our most vulnerable kids. And tonight you have part one of a few parts throughout the year of our response to some key items in the report so that we can move from being okay to good to great and providing the ideal services for our students with special needs. Tonight, I'm going to introduce to you, to some, and reintroduce to other, our very own senior director of special ed, Dr. Brian Biggs.
Thank you, Superintendent Wells, and thank you, Board and Albany community. I'm really excited to be here this evening. This has been a, a, a long process with a lot of great work from our consultant auditor, Maureen, who was able to present the audit report to us on May 10 board meeting. There was a lot of recommendations, a lot of information. And just a quick recap, it was a qualitative study. So we're, we're, we're looking at the voices of our, our families, of our teachers, of our staff members to really understand some of the systemic challenges and barriers that have been obstacles for our Department of Special Education that have hindered our progress for students with learning differences. So a lot of great information came out in order for us to, to, to step forward and start prioritizing ways that we can better support our department, our students, our families and our staff. So thank you, Julie, for jumping right in. We're going to, you know, breeze through the presentation. There's really only seven slides that I want to concentrate on tonight, but, because I hope everyone had the opportunity to, to review the presentation prior to this evening. So main two focuses, I want to give everyone a little bit of an update of our Department of Special Education and then also an update on our special education audit response. So here we go. We're diving into the 22, 23 school year and we are currently having three. and we are currently having three hundred and ten students that are eligible for special education that are in Albany schools. Now, we also have other students that are Albany residents that are eligible for special education but attend non-public schools or residential facilities. And then we have twenty five students who are currently placed outside of the district and private schools. So we have a total of three hundred and forty five students and at present date, or shall I say last Thursday, when I submitted this report to Friday, we had thirty eight eligible pending students for special education. And just for everyone's information, any if there's concern about a student's learning and their progress, there's different systems and supports to be able to identify students that may need to have special education. And I would just say, make sure that you talk to your teachers, you talk to your school psychologist and at any point in time, families are able to to refer for special education. And so we have thirty eight pending. And Julie, sorry, real quick, go back up. I want to I want to throw this out there to everybody and do a shout out to our North Region Selpa and the Community Advisory Committee. This picture right here is our procedural safeguards and for families who are new to special education. This may be something new for you, for those that have been special education, you receive your procedural safeguards every year. What's different about our procedural safeguards this year is we're doing a pilot and our Community Advisory Committee that meets monthly has put together some amazing resources that are hyperlinked through this front page. And so you can scroll down, Julie. One is this amazing IEP steps and parent rights summary. So the the procedural safeguards can be pretty cumbersome to read. The procedural, the IEP steps and summary rights really provides clear, concise and, you know, user friendly language to understand your rights as a parent with a student that has a learning disability. And then even more so, I really enjoy the guide for for parents and caregivers, which really breaks down the whole process for special education. And so the two resources together that are put together from the North Region Selpa and our Community Advisor Committee are great resources for families. And if anyone was interested in having these resources, I can make them available. We've printed out copies in my office, but they're also available through the hyperlinks of your procedural safeguards. Real brief, we've had a couple of staff change changes this year. I am, you know, ecstatic to, you know, invite and welcome Jeannie Paulovich as our special service technician too. She's wonderful, outstanding. And if any of you had any interface with my office, she is the point person and gets things done. So really happy to have her. We also have a new person to our team, a teacher on special assignment, which we can talk a little about later, but that's Karen Benini. You can scroll down. And then this is just no review of our staff. So it's there for everyone's record to show our 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 different related providers and support personnel across the district. And you can scroll down. And then here's a snapshot of all of our teachers and the related providers at the respective sites. And so if if you're a parent or a community member that are, you know, wanting to talk and get some information about speech therapy, occupational therapy, or understanding the process of special education, make sure you take a look at this this grid and contact your school to connect with that resource to, you know, better understand the different supports available. You can scroll down. And then, you know, I have to do a shout out. This was hard to format on this page because we have a lot of amazing paraeducators. And these are our support staff that are out in the field, working with students one to one in small groups, pushing into classes and are really amazing individuals who we have here in Albany Unified School District that I wanted, I wish I had the opportunity to get everyone's photo because they're 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 amazing individuals who do so much great work for our students in special education, as well as other students that are in the general education that get the benefit of having paraeducators in the class. Scroll down. Okay, so now is the meat and potatoes. We get this huge report from Marine about from the special education audit and it was broken into eight main sections. The first section was about our district level supports. And then the rest were recommendations that were broken into seven subsections for specifically related to special education. So if you can scroll down, Julie, I'm sorry. So before I I go into the different recommendations and our response to date, you know, this is still in the beginning processes of of working through our recommendations. It has been a huge job to to go through the recommendations and get stakeholders feedback. So we are still working on getting feedback and our two main sources right now is our our staff community as well as our advisory committee. There may be other stakeholders that we loop in as well, but right now, these are our two governing stakeholders that are really helping us grapple with the recommendations and then prioritize those recommendations review through data analysis. So the district wide shared leadership recommendations really are in alignment with our districts. Three, the first three goals of our district of student achievement, communication, supporting the whole child. So a lot of the recommendations that are the consultants recommended are things that we're already talking about in the district leadership within the within the board and within the community to to make sure that we're improving outcomes for all students that we're looking at, you know, being able to hire and retain highly qualified teaching staff. And then, of course, our initiatives for MTSS and UDL. So we can go to the next slide. And I'm not going to go through every single bullet point here because there was a lot of recommendations. And what I tried to do is whittle down the recommendations to a to a to a level of theme so that we can really understand what are some of the the main themes that came out from our from our qualitative audit, from our community and our staff to to better leverage the support in our Department of Special Education. And so we're going to go through this evening, some of the responses to date. And my hope is in part two of our update later this year, we'll be able to give you even more updates about what we've been doing in response to these recommendations and what we've already done. So administration, human relations and staffing, program service delivery, you can go to the next slide. And then professional development or Selpa and, you know, I apologize for the acronym, but our our Selpa is the special education local plan area and it's comprised of five districts, Albany, Berkeley, Emory, Alameda and Piedmont Unified. And we're all get together and and work to to get guidance from the state and have alignment across our our five districts with with regards to our our procedures, our policies and interpretations of the law. Communication and then also curriculum. And so those were the seven areas of our audit that were recommended and various different recommendations recommendations underneath those areas that we'll discuss this evening as far as what we in the Department of Special Education and the Albany Unified Community have done to date. So we can scroll down. One more time. So I want to take a minute here and talk about administration. And this is where I'll pause and you know, I I don't know President Hinckley, the the best best way to do this. And maybe you can give me some suggestion or guidance. I think we decided to to present for the first thirty four forty five minutes and then have question and answers. But I wonder, given the the amount of recommendations and where we've been with our response, if it would be better to be able to pause between each section and be able to answer any questions from from the board.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. And I think we have enough time to do that. And I think we'll just forget about the beginning step if we don't if we don't do it the way you've suggested. So I'm happy stopping here to see if people have questions about the administration. You know, goals and benchmarks.
Thanks. And I'll I'll speak a couple of different things here. And so most recently, I was I was working with a wise individual who was really talking to me about, you know, we need to know the what, the who and the when. And I think that was just really critical for me when presenting preparing for this presentation today is because this is an ongoing process for us in the Department of Special Education in Albany to take some of the recommendations and move forward with 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 them, even though we haven't even gotten to the place of prioritization. There's some essential recommendations that were already parallel with what we were doing last year and moving towards that we've executed. And I think one of the things that came up in the in the in the audit was there's a lot of staff that come into to the Department of Special Education Albany that just don't know what to do. And so one of the things that we started working on last year and had fully executed is a special education survival guide for our our teaching and related provider staff. And it provides the nuts and bolts of our of our of our department policies, procedures, as well as manuals from our from our Selpa that really can help our special education teachers and related providers navigate our systems within Albany Unified School District's Department of Special Education, as well as adhering to our compliance measures. And so we were able to distribute distribute those manuals or survival guides, as my team likes to refer to it. The the day that our teachers returned from school before staff became came here. And one thing that we are doing is that, you know, I'm really big on the concept of universal design of learning and accessibility and for me, having a binder is really critical because I like to hold on and touch things. But as as an individual who respects diverse learners, I also understand that people like to have different modalities. And so my special education leadership team is really working on building accessible measures and making the survival guide electronic. There's a padlet, there's a lot of hyperlinks within our that lead into documents within our Google Drive. So we're really looking and trying to provide resources for our teachers in an accessible manner, much like we're we're working on with our students. Another big thing within the district, within special education, and you'll hear from a lot of teachers is, you know, there's this piece about instruction. There's this piece about case management and our student information system is referred to SACE. And that's what SACE is right there, SACE training. So the second day of school, we had a SACE training for all brand new teachers to to our district, not maybe not new to special, I mean, special education teachers. We opened up for everybody in the department, but mostly only the special new special education teaching staff came. But we also have a video of that training as well as the resources that we've sent out to the department. So it's a really great opportunity for new staff to become familiar with our expectations and processes for for following some of the compliance measures within SACE. There's a lot of Ts that you got to cross and Is that you have to dot and buttons you have to push to make sure that we're in compliance with our transactions that we submit to to Cow Pads for for state reporting. So it was a good start and we're hoping to to be able to continue having a SACE training every so often and provide additional information to staff throughout the year pertaining to SACE updates.
So I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I'm just going to give a caveat to my to my saying we could do one slide at a time, which is we do have seven areas. So I think if there's just one or two things you want to highlight and then let people ask for elaboration.
Yeah, thank you so much, President Hinckley. I apologize. I get a little excited when we're talking about some of the work that we've done here. So you you can see it here. We've done a lot. A big thing is our teacher on special assignment and program specialists have, you know, hit the ground running and supporting our staff. I haven't even seen my program specials and teacher on special assignment because they've been, you know, out there supporting all our teachers. It's it's it can be hard starting the school year and they're out there connecting with new teachers, ensuring programs up and operational and putting out fires where need be. So any other questions about the the administration? Oh, one last thing I think is important, but we're going to do monthly informational sessions for understanding special education. And it's not just, you know, our teaching staff, but it's our community. And so there'll there'll be some information at the end of this presentation about one of our first initiatives that will be starting at the second Thursday of the month.
Great. I mean, I'm not seeing any hands for this slide, so I think we're good to move to the next one.
Excellent. Thank you. Human relations and staffing, one of the things that came up whenever I started here in Albany was the culture of our of our staff in special education. There's a lot of low morale. I think it had to do with, one, a lot of administrative turnover. I think, two, you know, dealing with COVID. And so I think one of the things we're working on this year is really trying to 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 support and recognize our staff. Really work on communication. You know, I was at a board workshop the other day and one of the the community members was wearing some some gear from Cornell. And, you know, I was talking to our our special education leadership team and we need to get some special education gear. So luckily, we have some amazing donations from community members that will allow us to do that. But we really want to 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 spread the word of special education and supporting our staff to make it so that it's enjoyable to be in the Department of Special Education. And so frequent communications is huge. And I think that I would rather over communicate than under communicate. And part of communication is just being humble too. And so we're really working on being able to spread that out with email communications, but we're going to be moving into the operating rhythm of a bulletin. And then one thing that's really big is we had eight vacancies in our our with our special education teachers when we started the school year or at the end of this last school year. And we were able to hire district hires, seven out of the eight educational specialists across mild moderate teachers, resource teachers and moderate severe special day class teachers. And that was a huge win for us. And we were able to actually hold on to one of our contractors that the site administrator and I felt was a great addition to their site. And we weren't able to to bring on a district tire for that position. So we agreed to continuing with that contractor for this year. But seven out of eight was really great. And I just want to say thank you to the Albany community because there was a huge I think partnership of being able to spread the word and also, you know, working with our 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 with ATA and being able to support, bring highly qualified people into the interview panel and finally into the position of being in Albany. So any questions about the slide? You can read some some of the other things that we're doing.
Yeah, trustee Davidson.
Just super quick, I see the Paraeducator Handbook updated revised. Is there training to go along with that or are they just getting a handbook?
Yeah, no, that's a really good question. So part of what we'll be doing is my the special education leadership team. And when I say that, it's not the program specialist and the teacher on special assignment and myself. We're putting together a professional development calendar throughout the year that looks at what are what are some of the the professional development for our special education teachers, our related providers, as well as our paraeducators, because there does need to be some training and it's not just about handing a book to them and being able to offer the opportunity for continuous improvement and getting some feedback. And so it's a work in progress. And so my hope is, one, we want to make sure there's a foundation that's in place and that's the handbook. And then, two, we can build off the handbook by doing some some PDs with our paraeducators.
Vice President Duran.
I just wanted to mention, Dr. Biggs, that I would like to commend you and HR in particular because I remember the last couple of years since COVID, we have been I have been terrified about the fact that we did not have sufficient special education staff. And and you and HR and the larger community have really pulled it off by by working really hard and focusing and and our students are benefiting from that. So just want to acknowledge all of you. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, I think we can move to the next one.
Training, professional development. So this this kind of just folds into something that I was discussing in the last slide, but we are working with our North Region Selpa for for putting together a audit within our department for training and needs. We met in May of last year to with our North Region Selpa Director and Program Specialist to talk through how best to approach connecting with staff and then what we're aligning it with some of our visions or our department's visions for for professional development in concert with the district's initiative. So that's that's still in process. The first meeting has occurred and once the once we settle down a little bit, we'll be meeting with the Selpa again to think through that. Another thing is putting together a flow chart for responsibilities. We have a lot of people in special education and I think being able to have a a tangible document that shows who is who and what they do can be really helpful to minimize any confusion and support, getting the information that individuals, whether it's staff or family or community members need. And then one of the things I think that trustee Davidson was talking about was some professional development. And the big thing for us is professional development when we onboard our para professionals. And that's something that we haven't done, but I am working to do and developing an action plan with with the special education leadership team. And we'll be looking at this monthly about designing a professional onboarding support. And the next next update, I'll give you guys an update of when it will be complete. You can go to the next slide and if there's any You can go to the next slide and if, oh, if there's any questions.
I don't see any. Oh, yep. Trustee Boyd.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask Dr. Biggs for the Special Education Survival Guide, which I think was going to families. I just wanted to ask about the availability in different languages for that. I'm not sure if it's electronic, so if it's something that is automatically kind of translatable or if it's something that was a physical, physically provided, if that was available in different languages.
Yeah, I'm so sorry, Trustee Boyd. There's, there's, there's a couple of different resources. One, the Special Education Survival Guide for AUSD is for our teaching staff. The, the procedural safeguards that have a hyperlink towards IEP summary and IEP steps and summary of your parent rights, as well as a, a guide to special education is part of our SELPA. And the, the guide for special education is in a few different languages. So if you go through that hyperlink, you can choose the different language. The IEP steps and the summary that was put together by our Community Advisory Committee has yet been translated into different languages. But we're hoping to be able to do that after our pilot of, of the initial procedural safeguard summary.
All right. I think we can go to the next one.
Program service and delivery. I think there's this huge piece about continuous cycle of improvement. And one of the things that, you know, I'm working with is working with the individual site administrators to think about how best to support our teachers so that they can collaborate with one another and balance the duties of instruction as well as case management. And then, you know, also having to grapple with some of the, the, the challenges of compliance. And so monthly meetings will be, be done by my program specialist, as well as compliance reports for myself. And that, you know, a huge piece for us is bringing on our teacher special assignment, which was in, in alignment with, you know, our department's thinking and the audit. And then being that bridge with our other TOSSAs under our Director of Professional Development that are working towards the initiative of MTSS in UDL. And any, any questions about any of the other items about program service and delivery?
Can you say more about this, the IEP feedback form? What is that?
Yeah. So one of the things that we, there's so much, so much that goes into developing an IEP from, you know, making, from the substantive side, making sure that we're connecting students' needs to developing SMART goals and then connecting the SMART goals to accommodations and reasonably calculated services to support them on those goals. And so the IP feedback form provides feedback to, to case managers about, you know, different compliance, procedural compliance measures, as well as substantive compliance so that they can strengthen their, their ability for writing IDPs.
Trustee Dos.
Quick question. Are there different rules and regulations that might hinder either a, a family or a district based on the city? Like are there specific rules and regulations around special education within different cities or specifically Albany that might be, you know, hindering or preventing from either providing certain things or regulations that might be hindering access to students or access to services?
No, no, I, I don't think for the, the student level as far as, you know, we, we're governed by the IDEA and now that's, you know, a federal, federal law and, you know, there's certain state regulations. And we, we adhere to some of those state, we adhere to all those state regulations. For instance, in the state of California, you have to have consent from a parent in order to execute an IEP. In other states, you only need consent for a parent to execute the initial IEP. And then every IEP after that doesn't need to be consented by a parent. So California is a little bit more regulated, which is great because part of the IDEA talks about meaningful parental participation. And so, which is a huge piece to developing a compliant IEP for a student because the parent, in my opinion, knows, knows the best and the most about our young scholar and can really, and needs to be a part of that process. So I, I really appreciate that component to California state regulations. But as far as like county differences, not, not that I'm aware of. I do know at like at the local level, so at different districts, depending on different relationships with bargaining units, there may be different regulations for, you know, evaluations or there may be different regulations for, you know, caseloads or, but that's, it's still following the, the state recommendations. And then it's whatever's negotiated with the district and those bargaining units. But I think one thing that's really great about Albany is, you know, our leadership here from Superintendent Wells has really allowed us to, to build strong relationships with our staff. And I have the fortunate, you know, fortune of, of being, you know, you know, peers with a lot of the teachers and, and, and related providers out there. My focus, as I told them this year, is to support them. Because if I, if they're not supported, then our students aren't getting the support that they need. And so a lot of it is building those relationships with our staff and working together about figuring out how best to support students. And to date, I haven't, in, since being in this position, faced an issue that hindered the ability to, for a student to have access in compliance with IDEA and our state regulations.
Vice President Duran.
Dr. Biggs, could you talk a little bit about the, the very first one, which is your hope to do action plans so that there'll be teacher collaboration time? Teacher collaboration time, as we know, is very precious and it's, it's hard to find. What are your ideas for trying to pull that together? Because I'm assuming you're talking about the general ed teacher. Is that correct?
Yeah, definitely. And I think, you know, you know, I wish, I wish we had all the resources in the world. I wish we could have, you know, there's, there's so many things I wish. But I also know that there's a lot of opportunity with, with sitting down and working through intentional planning. And so just, you know, what we need to be doing and what we started, started trying to do last year is, you know, in February, start thinking about the next year, about scheduling, about groupings. And, you know, how do we create, you know, cohorts or schools within schools to support students? So, and that allow for teachers to be able to, to cover classes or having your Rovin sub cover our classes and/or having your specialists come in and do some presentations to the whole class while there's some time for, for collaboration. There's a lot of creative ways that a lot of our administrators and I have talked about. And it's just really sitting down and doing some more of that conversation. And it's different for every site, you know, it's a little bit, you know, harder in the elementary level and somewhat easier at the secondary level. But, you know, each have their, their, their challenges. But I, I think from the one thing that I, what I know from talking to all of our principals is they're very committed to that as well in trying to find, you know, ways to increase the time for collaboration. You know, I think for, when we think about specialized and academic instruction, it's about how do you, how, how do we, how do we break down the, the content standards? And if we're doing curriculum adaptations, differentiation, how do we leverage our special education teachers? Not just for our special education students, but for any student that has learning differences in the classroom. So I don't have a concrete answer, but it is, it's a passion and something that I'm committed to. And I know our principals are also committed to it.
Great. Thank you. I think we can move to the next one. I'm sure we'll come back to some of these in sort of overarching comments, but.
Yeah. And another one thing that came up was working with our SELPA. And, you know, we have our professional learning groups for our related providers, our school psychologists, speech pathologists, occupational therapists or motor groups, behaviorists. And they all get together to kind of share resources and, and support one another with best practices, which is a really great consortium of individuals. But one thing that we, we haven't done in Albany very, very well since, you know, I've been here since 2010 is really leverage our SELPA support services such as working through alternative dispute resolution and other professional development. And so that's something I'm hoping, as mentioned earlier, about meeting with the SELPA Director in May, putting together a plan for, for, you know, PD as well as a action plan for how our sites can access our, our, and families can access alternative dispute resolution and other resources within the SELPA and community. Go to next slide. Oh, I'm sorry. Any questions?
I don't see any.
All right. Thank you. Communication, as I mentioned earlier, you know, I think over-communication is critical. You know, you know, frequent and transparent communication. You know, I'm not perfect. Our department's not perfect. We're all human. And I think being, you know, authentic with our, with our staff and being, being transparent and trying to be ahead of the game because in Albany, things get around very quickly. And being able to be that conduit of, of communication as the leader in special education is something that I'm really trying to work on. And, and really moving away from, from talking, that's not really, you know, shown right now in my presentation, but talking in my department meetings and really working towards engagement. And we're having our teachers work with one another on, on various different activities related to some of, some of our learning objectives for our vision within our departments. And then one thing that, you know, you know, we haven't discussed in, in full depth within, within our department yet, but it's something that needs to be a conversation was the recommendation about doing a post-IEP survey, being able to collect some information that could be anonymous so that we can do better for our students and for our families and for our staff. And then we'll learn about this here in a minute, but I'm really excited about our special education family get together in collaboration with the Albany Disability Squad. That's going to take place on September 18th. Time and location to be announced shortly. We are working on it and just really excited to have that partnership and get away from the Hollywood squares and be able to be in person with people and celebrate our students with diverse learning needs here in Albany. We also have our special education advisory committee. And that also is something that has not started up this year yet. But we're working with the committee right now and we've, we've grappled with different dates and methods of being able to, to meet. And we're still working on, you know, the where, the where we're meeting, but we will be meeting the second Thursday of the month from 6:30 to 7:45. And then we'll also be doing a navigating special education for parents and caregivers. Also on Thursdays at five o'clock, which I'll, I'll, I'll record and post for families to be able to receive. But we'll be going through the, the nuts and bolts of special education, providing support for both families that are curious about special education, as well as families that are new to special education or families that have been in special education and want to be part of it and contribute to the conversation. Next slide. Oh.
Can I just ask, is that the same as the monthly information sessions that was? Okay.
Yeah, this is the first monthly information session. There's going to be other informational sessions that I hope to be able to, to.
Oh, I see. It's so different themes.
Yeah. But I, I feel like in all, in dealing, working in special education, it's such a huge unknown to families. And I think the more that we can make ourselves available for talking through special education can really help with, you know, at the very beginning. But I think there's also many other themes that could, could, could come up throughout the year. I love something for some of my other special education leadership individuals to be able to present on as well. So. Next slide.
Got it.
Curriculum. You know, one of the things that, you know, I, when we talk about transparency and communication, a lot of people don't know is I, I, I meet with our Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services monthly to, to talk about professional development and also talk about curriculum. But one thing that we are going to be doing that's different is now that we do have our special education teacher on special assignment, they'll be part of, as I mentioned earlier, our professional, the other TOSA meetings and working with our Director of Professional Development. And this year, our teacher on special assignment and program specialist are really working and looking at our current special education curriculum, as well as our intervention supports. And then in collaboration with a curriculum committee, potentially hopefully be able to, to make some changes for different curriculum for our special education department. And then teacher on special assignment to support teachers effective delivery of curriculum. This is, you know, kind of the meat and potatoes of our teacher and special assignment is really helping our teachers on the ground level with instruction and being able to, to support student engagement and, you know, manage all the complexities of being a teacher. Next slide.
Oh, we have a trustee question from trustee Dos.
Yeah, quick question in regards to the, you mentioned the teacher on special assignment. That usually happens, right? Like, you know, the teacher's on special assignment because they're not assigned to a classroom specifically. And so because of that, the next year comes around and then maybe they are assigned to a classroom or to a different place. So how does that affect, you know, because I know like, you know, especially in special education, students build relationships with the people that they, with the teachers and the staff that they work with. And sometimes change can be really hard and tough. So how do you manage, you know, that like change? Or, or is there like a lot of, you know, change and kind of moving around since with the use of like teachers on special assignment versus, you know, having more like long-term people in, in those, in that role?
Yeah, you know, my, you know, I don't know where our teacher on special assignment position is going to go. Alls I know is I have, we have this position right now and I'm really excited about it. My hope is that this is a, a position that continues because that position is here to support our teachers. And as I mentioned earlier, being able to support our teachers on the ground level is going to impact our students directly. And I'm really excited that we have our teacher on special assignment, Karen Benini, who has been in Albany for, for many years as, as a teacher, supporting our students in an inclusive setting, supporting some of our most, some of our students that have moderate severe disabilities and learning differences, being able to be included in general education and accessing some of the essential standards and developing social skills. So my, my hope is that she'll be with us for some time here. I just am able to celebrate right now and for this year. I think to your point about, you know, the transition between case managers, yeah, it's hard. You know, I like consistency and that's one of the things, you know, when we talk about our, our objectives of trying to, you know, hire and retain staff, we want to retain our staff here in Albany in special education. I have teachers who have been here for the past 22 years. The seven teachers we brought on this year, I want the same thing for them because Albany is an amazing place to work. I've seen it from my own experience, from being here as an intern to being a school psychologist, a program specialist, and now the Senior Director of Special Education. And so I'm investing in our teachers, our community's investing in our teachers and the board is invested in our teachers by giving us this teacher on special assignment. And Dr. Wells, thank you very much because that is going to be a critical component, I believe, towards retaining our teachers here in Albany Unified School District in special education. It is, it's a hard job being a special educator. I think they say within five years, there's, there's the burnout. But I've also seen here in Albany, teachers who've been here for 22 years. So I have a lot of faith within our department and within our staff to be able to work on building the supports to retain our, 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 our special education staff.
Trustee Davidson.
Can you tell a little bit more about this review, the current special education curriculum and adopt a research-based reading curriculum? Do we have a specific reading curriculum for our students in this program right now? Or is this something that we need and, yeah, just a little more?
Yeah, you know, it's, it's a, it's a great question and I probably can come back with you with more specific details. But what I can tell you from what I hear from my program specialist is that we have a little bit of fragmentation across our different schools within the Department of Special Education. There's some, some of our specialists use one evidence-based, you know, reading intervention program while someone else does something different. And I personally feel that if my student goes to Marin Elementary School and is receiving, you know, reading intervention you know, uh, reading intervention from a special education teacher, it shouldn't be different than my student that goes to Ocean View um or Cornell. And so we're going to be looking at what we currently have. We're going to be looking at what are some of the, you know, the, the, the best intervention programs out there for our students with diverse learning needs. Um, you know, I know some, some of our teachers have used Wilson before, some of our teachers I know use Spire curriculum. It's been, it's, it's, it's all over the place. So we're going to try to tighten this up so that we can really narrow into supporting students um and making sure that it's equitable, equitable, no matter what school that you go to.
I think if you want to do the last wrap-up slide, then we can do sort of over, overarching questions.
Great. You know, I, I mentioned this before, but I got to mention it again. Really excited, September eighteenth. Um, more information will come out through Parents Square and other means of communication, but um the Albany Disability Squad and Albany Unified School District are coming together to cel- celebrate our students in special education um and our community um on September eighteenth. Um, like I mentioned before, time and location to be uh determined and will be um sent out to everyone shortly. Um, and if you have any questions about it, you can contact the special um service technician, Jeanne Palovich. Um, also, um, if you're a family member, a, a community member within, within Albany, um and would like to um be involved um within our North Region Self-Pa Community Advisor Committee. That's the committee that put together the amazing IEP summary, um, our IEP steps and procedural safeguard summary. Um, they meet um once a month and the next meeting is on September twenty-sixth from six to seven thirty PM. And you can access the Zoom link through the North Region Self-Pa website that's located here. Or if you'd like to get information, I typically send out a, a, a bulletin to, to families every month. Um, but um you can also contact our, my office for, for getting in contact with the Self-Pa. And then uh here are the two other events that I discussed, navigating special education and our special education advisory committee here in Albany Unified School District. So that is the, the end of the special education audit report response update one. Thank you for your support and uh, and for all your commitment to our students and especially those students with learning differences. So any questions, comments, feedback, discussion?
Thank you. I will note the Albany Disability Squad already has t-shirts in case.
No.
That's, yes.
I, you know.
I've seen them.
And, and I, I don't want to have any spoiler alerts, but we're, we're working on something that will.
Great.
Hopefully it'll be ready by the eighteenth, but um I, my, I, I have an Albany Disability Squad t-shirt, my wife does and my son. Um, so really, really excited about that. I, I just need to get the long sleeve ones. I have a short sleeve.
Got it. All right, I'm going to jump the line and ask my question because I forgot to raise my hand, which is um, I see some different elements that might address this, but I just wanted to get your, your thoughts about how it's going. So it, at the beginning, you mentioned there are thirty-eight students pending eligibility and you know that the issue of sort of backlog of assessments has been an issue for a few years dating before your time. And I, I know staffing has been one factor, but um can you maybe speak to how you're, how you think we're going to be able to improve on that this year in terms of really moving those through more quickly and not having the same kind of backlog happen that we have for the last two years?
Yeah, thank you so much, President Hinckley. One thing that we did um this school year is we reorganized our school psychologist um uh FTE. And so um, you know, historically, this is dating back to years and years ago. We had um one school psychologist for three elementary schools. That's not really in alignment with present day recommendations from the National Association of School Psychology, nor in alignment with our community. And so um we have a school psychologist that's at two elementary schools and then one that is a part-time psychologist at our one elementary school and our preschool program. And so it's reduced the ratio so it can help them better um execute their duties for completing assessments as well as providing some of the additional amazing support that school psychologists can offer to a school site for system level support and service delivery. Um, at our middle school, our, our school psychologist had historically um, it spent four days um at Albany Middle School and one day at an alternative site. And um they are now full-time, five days at Albany Middle School, which again brings the ratio of the school psychologist to student count um lower, which is great. And our high school is honestly, it's the biggest hitter and um had been in conversation with our program specialist this past week um because we need some support. And so I'm working on bringing in some additional support for our school psychologists to, to work on some of these assessments that have, uh, that are still outstanding. Um, because there are some assessments that were not completed at the end of last year, not because of our school psychologist, um, you know, but because of other assessors that weren't able to complete on time. Um, and then we just have a lot of assessments coming up. Um, it's kind of a unfortunate, you know, piece that, you know, we have our sixty-day calendar for assessments. And if we get an assessment plan back within the last thirty days of school, um, it could be the last day of school, instead of having a full sixty days. Uh, when we return from school, we only have thirty days to complete that assessment. And so um, and we, we, we sometimes assess over the summer. This summer, we weren't able to get contractors to assess over the summer. Um, but um it's not required to assess over the summer. So um, we have a lot of assessments coming up and so we are getting some help. Um, I had a conversation with someone that we worked with in the past that's going to provide some relief.
Great. So I think in the next versions of the audit update, having some, some of the kinds of numbers you gave us bef- before about, you know, how long the difference, how long people have been waiting, how long they've been pending? And then also the um, the reviews that have to be done of students who already have IEPs, but that'd be great data to have.
Yeah.
Uh, tr- trustee Davidson.
Trustee Dana, you had your hand up before me. Did you still have a question?
It wasn't necessarily a question. It was, it was just an appreciation. So I figured I'd let all the questions go and then.
Well, I have a little of that too. So um, I really wanted to extend an appreciation and I sent this to Superintendent Wells when I got your, the agenda and saw this report. It was so helpful to have this format. I felt like, wow, this is something that we can track as a board. We can monitor it. I actually texted Vice President Duran really early in the morning um that I was so excited about this and thought, oh, this is kind of what we've been asking for, for transparency and really knowing what's going on and, and how you're taking things to the next step. So I just really wanted to extend that appreciation and um, I think it's going to help us go throughout the year and know what's happening. Um, my one just quick question, and maybe this could come to us later or the next time. I would love to understand a little bit more about, I think it was the first or second slide where we have um students who are placed in the non-public schools and then the parental placements would really help to understand um, uh, just a little more of the process of that, the financials associated with all of that, just sort of as a bundle. Um, so maybe we just get that at another time. Thank you so much.
Now, should I?
Dana, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, um, I just wanted to extend utmost appreciation um to you, Dr. Biggs. I just um, or Director Biggs, I, I just, I feel that this is one of the communities that um I just sort of an u- under-informed around um or uninfor- or like just under-informed um in this role that I have. And this format and this like presentation was so, um, and I don't know if I can speak for you, Nali, on this too. But I was like looking for questions that I had and you just outlined everything so perfectly. And um I'd just like to say, give you kudos. Um, and yeah, my utmost appreciation. Thank you so much for putting this together and for um, your presentation. It was super informative for me. Um, and I'm sure a lot of people in the public feel the way that I do. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Vice President Duran.
Um, I just wanted to mention, Dr. Biggs, you had talked about it, you know, getting the feedback from um in particular, the, the, your, your parent um group as well, um, as well as with your staff. And what I'm wondering about too is, is um, if you have it somewhere on your list of many things to check off this year is what about the parents of each and every child? And in particular, once again, those voices that we don't really hear about too much. And I think especially though in particular, has to reach out to those parents. So you might also have some idea of how the district could be better in general at reaching out to, to a lot of parents that don't necessarily uh participate in our regular meetings or, or, you know, um, respond on the, the, the surveys. And so eh, maybe you have some thoughts about that in the future and/or if you specifically are going to be reaching out to each and every parent by the end of this year to seeing how they feel about what's going on, what's been going on for their child and the differences they might possibly see in the services provided.
Yeah, thank you so much, Vice President Duran. I, yeah, I think, you know, a lot of the times I, I, I think great ideas, but those ideas are very passive. And so what I'm hearing is what are some of the action-oriented approaches for outreach? And I don't know quite yet. I need to think through that. Um, you know, is it making phone calls? Um, because I can, you know, I can have, you know, you know, a forum, I can have, you know, open office hours, but what are some of the, you know, other mechanisms for really connecting with our families? And so I need, I need to think through that, um, because you're a hundred percent correct. I have some families who I talk to every day, which are amazing. They're, they're, they're amazing parents. But there's also families that I know um that, you know, don't even come to their, 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 their students' IEP meeting because maybe they're, you know, they're, they have, they have three jobs and they're just trying to make things um work. So I think being able to think of, you know, strategic ways to reach out to them would be really important. So I can get some of their feedback as well. So I need to think through that, but I can put that on my list of, of coming back with an audit response update too, um, with, with some of those ideas and hopefully some action items that I've already done.
Great. Well, I'll echo appreciation for all the work. This sounds like a huge workload for everybody involved. Um, that was my, one of my sort of concerns, reading it was, it's a lot. And we always want to make sure we have realistic goals for what we can do in a year. Um, I just wanted to ask for one sort of follow-up this fall. It sounds like the Director of Professional Development and the Special Education Teacher on Special Assignment would be a great pair to give the board some education about how we're doing UDL and MTSS. Um, and we've, we've asked for that to be sort of a, I don't know that it needs to be a standalone workshop, but certainly to have some education of board members about not just how we're going to implement it here, but what it is, the theories behind it, the research that shows why it's effective. And just seeing that that set of people is working together to, to look at our curriculum and, and work on how we support that process made me think maybe that would be a good opportunity for us to hear from them. You know, as, as particular staff people and then to have them deliver that training, you know, in coordination with whatever other staff are appropriate, but that I would love to, to benefit from that as a next step.
Excellent. Well, I'll talk to our assistant superintendent and see, see what we can do. I think it's a great idea. So, and share the resources.
All right. And a smarter board, a, a more educated board is more effective, right? That's um, all right. So I think we're done. Oh, no, we're not done. I dawdled enough that uh we are ready to take public comment. I'm just going to wait for our timer. All right, go ahead. Apologies if your Zoom name is not your actual name. Um, go ahead, Max.
Thank you very much. Uh, I really enjoyed the presentation, Dr. Biggs. Thank you. Uh, I'm the very proud father of a child in the special day program at Albany Children's School. Uh, and we just received note, uh, notice this afternoon uh that the teacher in that program uh won't be continuing. Uh, when a replacement is found, that will be the fourth teacher that my son's classroom has had since he began at the center in January. And uh, so my first question is if I could sort of appreciate it if you could uh outline uh what concrete steps your department is taking to ensure retention, uh picking up on a point raised by uh uh trustee, oh gosh, I've forgotten his name. I apologize. He's not on my screen, so I don't have a name to point to about the uh importance of continuity uh in special education. The paraprofessional who was working with my son in the spring has also left the program. Uh, and so uh the person that was really spending a lot of time with him, a lot of hours with him every day has also exited. We, as a family, weren't informed of the exits of the previous two teachers uh when they happened, uh, let alone the context uh of the uh decisions to uh leave the program or whatever may have happened. We don't know. Uh, and so in the interest of securing continuity, in the interest of retaining staff, in the interest of increasing communication with parents like me, I'm hoping that uh you can outline some of those concrete steps uh now. Thank you.
Thank you. Oops, sorry about that. Uh, Dr. Biggs, do you want to respond to that question? Okay.
You know, it's um, it was a really sour morning this morning at six forty AM when I got notification about our teacher who is for, for, for their own reasons, will no longer be within the district. So I think there's, there's a hard piece when we talk about special education and being able to, to retain staff. Um, we put forward all our efforts as far as resources to support, so, support um an individual. And there could be, you know, instances that for this particular um individual and/or other individuals that were in that position. And I believe we only actually had one other teacher in that position. I know that there were some other substitutes and a um summer school teacher, but um s- since I've been in the district, we've had three um teachers in that position. Well, no, well, there, we, we had a, yeah, three teachers in that position. Um, and um some decisions have to be made either from the district or from, for that individual. Um, and you know, it is a priority. Today I've already had interviews with um another um individual and looking at some reorganization within the, the school district. Um, and I, I have, you know, I have, would always say to families that I, you know, I'm available to, to speak to you about the specifics of, of your students and of the programs. Um, and also to reach out to your program specialist. Um, I'm a little surprised to hear that there wasn't communication um for the previous departures of our, our teachers. But we're, we're, we're doing our best right now to be able to deal with the aftermath of our teacher le- leaving today. And I apologize for families. The big thing I can say is I'm really excited that we have um some staff members who have been in that program that are staying in the program for par educators um to ensure some of the continuity. And we have a substitute tomorrow who um is going to be able to really help out everything. But what I will do is uh put together a more s- solid plan to, to um demonstrate to, to the community what we're doing as far as hiring, as well as trying to retain our staff members. It is a difficult time. And so I have a lot of individuals who have, have started with us and have decided to leave to go to private sectors. Um, who have left to leave the state. And you know, I'm not able, and I'm not liberty to be able to disclose some of that specific information for individual staff members, but it is the reality that we have within our society right now, specifically in the Bay Area with s- some of the expenses that, that um it, it costs to, to live here. So um, and it's not just here in Albany. I'm very fortunate that which, you know, we've been able, we'd start the year at least fully staffed. And today is a really sad day for us. So, but I'm also really hopeful with my support from my special education leadership connections within the community and our, and efforts already to be able to secure a, a qualified teacher for um, um, our special day class program at Albany Children's Center um shortly.
Great. Thank you. All right, Ben.
Hello. Thank you for uh giving me some time to speak. Um, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Um, thank you so much, Brian, for a very well-thought-out and responsive presentation. I hope the special education audit is providing a good round roadmap for you and, and your team. Um, it also looks like it's created a huge workload for you and the other special education staff. Um, I also really appreciate the, the what, who, when format very well oriented. I also really appreciate the, the what, who, when format, very well organized, one thing that I did notice. As I was watching the slides is that. Every single person. In the who column. Was a person who works in the Special Education Department. And there was one exception, the Curriculum Committee was mentioned, but. Every other person was a person who works in the Special Education Department. And another thing that I was noticing as I was listening to it is that, you know, it's kind of comparing what the audit actually says. And the first couple pages of the audit talks about the culture of the district. Supporting a culture change to ensure all students are included and treated as general education students first. The need to train for and implement a robust MTSS system which involves. General education as well as special education, many, I could go on, but that was really the thrust of the audit, and I actually didn't hear. Hardly anything about that today, and I don't really want to, at, at first I was like, come on, Brian, but after a while, I was like, well, wait a minute. Brian supervises the Special Education Department, so it would really be out of line. For him to be talking and assigning things to people outside of the Special Education Department, so what's. Very noticeable about this is that Albany's response to the sped audit is that it is one hundred percent sped. It is one hundred percent segmented program, and I, I'm not sure that that part of the audit has been heard at all. I do want to say though, I think it provides a great opportunity, especially if there's going to be a follow up, it, it would be lovely to. See, to hear from the vision of, say, the superintendent. Who actually does have the authority to look at the integration between general education and special education, because there's a lot in the audit about that. And it would be great to hear that in the, in the second meeting, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ben, and, you know, I'll just, if it's okay, President Hinckley, just to respond real quickly. I think, yeah, given, given some of the constraints of my department, I, I, I was really focusing on. What, what are the action steps that my department can take, and I see our teacher on special assignment is that. Individual that is able to really infiltrate and, you know, work with some of our general education. Leaders or, you know, teachers on special assignment that are supporting all of our staff towards these initiatives. And supports to be that leverage for us to really help. Bridge the gap between special education and general education, but also, you know, when we think about special education. And we think about equipping our teachers with the tools for instruction as well as procedural compliance. It's all aimed towards dismantling barriers for students learning, which is in concert with UTL, UDL and MTSS. So a lot of the work that we're doing is trying to educate and elevate the, the special education teachers. Work so that they can actually get into general education and they can start working on breaking down content standards. And educating all students to be included, so. I, I, I understand where you're coming from, I also see an opportunity from the lens of my department. And, and also know that I am working with, you know, the executive cabinet and the rest of the leadership team here. In Albany to make sure that our students and special education's voice is being heard. And, and a focal point in our conversations for MTSS and UDL.
Great, I'm gonna take the next two in a row, because we are up against, we're over time. And I've been charged with keeping us on time, so I'm gonna let Neri and Julie speak and then Dr. Biggs let you have the last. Last bird here, all right, go ahead, Neri.
Thank you, Board, and thank you, Dr. Biggs, for your presentation, once again, I'd like to thank Dr. Wells for making the. Brave and right choice to bring on board Dr. Biggs. I believe the board and Dr. Wells can tell the difference in tone since he arrived and there has been some progress, so I appreciate that. I also want to congratulate Karen Bonini on her new appointment as teacher on special assignment, it was hard to let her go. As far as our family is concerned, she's the one who got away. But she's off to greater things and to having greater impact on many more students in the district, and that's. Great, I do want to pick up on one of the comments from Ben Wallace. Who did mention that, I mean, and you've heard me ask about, also thank you. President Hinckley for bringing up UDL and MTSS, it would be great to have a. An update on the progress of how that's going, the training, the implementation. And not only from the new teacher on special assignment and the new Director of Professional Development. But also from the Assistant Superintendent and Shane and from the newly appointed Executive Director of Student Services. Deb Brill, we would like to really see how the teams are coming together and. What they are doing to make this not something that just falls on the shoulders. Of a small yet mighty but small team in special education, but the entire district, especially considering that. These are ways of teaching that should benefit all students, not only students of special education. And if implemented well, should support the teachers in doing so, thank you.
Thank you. Julie. You might be on mute.
Oh, sorry about that, story of my life, so. I, I just want to, you know, again, thank you to Dr. Biggs for his, his clear presentation, it's really great to hear. About special education faculty getting more support and the teacher on special assignment, Karen Bonini is just. A, a treasure to the district, so I'm very really happy about that, but I also. Do want to sort of reiterate both Neri and Ben's comments about. The need to really think about universal design for learning as something that's, that's district wide, that is. Not just special education and the importance of that it's going to be something that benefits. Everyone, but it also needs resources and it needs to have general education teachers. On board and thinking about, well, what does it mean to think about a student with disabilities as a GE student first? And I would just really encourage. The district to really think about what that might look like structurally. That what that might look like with a presentation with teachers, talking about UDL who are GE teachers as well as special educators, so thank you, that's it.
Great, thank you, and actually there's one, one more comment. From, whoops, sorry, clicked the wrong thing, from Sarah.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, good evening, Board, my name is Sarah Haller, I'm a resource teacher in the Special Education Department and good evening to the community and. I just, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I couldn't help but chime in to make sure that. It's noted that we are actually well underway with our UDL work. And we have a wonderful additional TSA, there are a number of others who maybe are not going to be mentioned tonight, but I couldn't. Let this meeting end without mentioning the incredible work that a TSA by the name of Jen Gritman has been undertaking. This work began last year, perhaps even the year before, but there's been a particular emphasis and push. Towards supporting general ed teachers, special ed teachers, all teachers, anyone who is looking for this support. In learning the ins and outs of UDL, and in fact, just yesterday, Jen hosted. The first of a multi-part series workshop where teachers are eligible to be paid. To attend these workshops outside of their contracted hours. Additionally, Jen is offering to work one-on-one with teachers on various projects and. Really is offering a very UDL approach to learning about UDL. One that teachers can customize to the way in which they may learn these concepts best, so. I, I just want to mention that because some of the callers made fantastic points about how important it is that this. Push really come from the whole district and, and really, as we've said and heard many times before, special ed students are. General ed students first, and. Jen Gritman is a general ed educator, as far as I know, she does not have a special ed credential, so she is a general education teacher on special assignment, as far as I know. And, and we are really getting there, so there's been a lot of great movement, well done, Dr. Biggs, have a great evening.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Biggs, do you want to? Say any last comments?
No, I, I just want to say thank you to Superintendent Wells for giving me the opportunity and for the board. For the opportunity to, to work through the Special Education Audit, you know, I was a little bit apprehensive. At first, because I was pretty overwhelmed, but as some of the callers have mentioned, it's really been a, a grounding opportunity to understand. Some of the areas that we need to move within the Department of Special Education, so it's been a really great. Start to the process because we are just starting it in respects to our response, so I look forward to, to continuing to work, and I don't see this as an overwhelming. You know, amount of things to do, and I, as I mentioned earlier. I'm not, we're not going to be perfect, but we are going to set some objectives. And we're going to try to meet those objectives and we'll be open and communicate with everybody if we don't, but I think we have some really good. Staff who are committed to, to working towards some of these goals, and I'm looking forward to meeting with the Advisory Committee. At the, the next second Thursday of the month, so we can, can start talking more about this, so, thank you, everybody, and appreciate the time.
Great, thank you, and I think some of the last comments. Illustrate again the importance of the board really getting a presentation about the vision and plan for UDL and MTSS. I, I know there has been a lot going on, but it's never been. Sort of brought to us as a staff report, so I think something like that. Will be really helpful, just so that we're all understanding. How that's rolling out.
And just to note, we have that on the board calendar, so thank you for the reminder.
Great, so we now move on to our one review and action item, which is the provisional internship permit. I'm not sure who I'm handing this off to.
And that goes to our Chief Human Resource Officer, Reyna Gonzalez.
Thank you, good evening, everyone, so this, we saw one of these at our last board meeting, right, this is. Emergency credential for a person who is in a credential program. But doesn't yet qualify for an intern credential, so that we have this one that comes before the provisional intern permit. Just something I wanted to highlight, if we scroll down just a little. The person. That we're applying for is Remia Manorema, and Remia has been working for the district as a paraeducator in special education. And then entered into a credential program and now is serving as a teacher, resource teacher. So this is exciting, this is one of those instances where someone said, hey, you know, I'm going to start out here, but I, I really enjoy what I'm doing and. I want to sort of take it further and, and become a teacher, so kind of excited about that recruitment from within. And that's all I'll say about this, and I'll entertain any questions if there are any.
Great, thank you. Any questions or a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the provisional internship permit.
I second.
Trustee Garcia Bustamante? Yes. Trustee Dana?
Yes.
Vice President Duran?
Yes.
President Hinckley?
Yes.
Trustee Boyd?
Yes.
Trustee Davidson?
Yes.
Trustee Dos?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, the item passes unanimously and we are done with our agenda, so I will entertain. Future agenda items. Yeah, Trustee Dana?
I just, I'm not sure if this was already like mentioned, but the Student Advocacy Committee. Review of the, of last year's. Survey for the students.
Great, all right, I can follow up with, with you about when that'll be ready. Yeah, Trustee Dos?
Yeah, I mentioned organized sports at the elementary school level.
All right. Any others? All right, our next regular board meeting is Tuesday, September thirteenth, Happy Labor Day, everybody, and we are adjourned.